Council Chambers, would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Okay, Kathleen, can we get a roll call, please?
Murray?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
Wilson? Phillips?
Here.
McCambell?
Here.
Okay.
All right, Your Honor, I have the distinct pleasure of a proclamation. Whereas in 2000, the Burlington Police Department instituted an award for the Officer of the Year, whereby officers had the opportunity to nominate a fellow officer for his or her contribution to the department and the community as a whole. And whereas the award was renamed, the Lieutenant Steve Cassidy of the Officer of the Year Award in memorial to Lieutenant Cassidy, who exemplified the characteristics of an officer going above and beyond expectations on a daily basis. And whereas the 2017 award recipient has been with the Burlington Police Department since March 2012, during this time he has served as a uniform patrol officer, assigned to the night shift without fail, shows up for his shift with a positive attitude even when feeling a little under the weather. He has grown into an officer others can come to for advice when questions arise and is always willing to back fellow officers up on calls for service. His extra assignments within the department include being a standardized field sobriety instructor and a field training officer. During this past year, he had a hand in training the three out of five new hires in the FTO process. Whenever asked to help out with training probationary officers, he is always eager to lend a hand. He willingly changed shifts at one point to help out with training, which was a benefit to the department, but not necessarily to his pre-scheduled time he could have spent with his family. Overall, he is an officer the department and the community can feel proud about having on the streets at night. He is proactive, he does not procrastinate completing his assigned tasks each night. For these reasons, he is very deserving of the nomination of Lieutenant Steve Cassidy Officer of the Year Award. Now, therefore, we as the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby announce and proclaim the 18th award recipient of the 2017 Officer of the Year as Officer Lucas Peterson. In recognition of his positive attitude in providing service to our community throughout 2017, we therefore call on all our citizens to especially honor and show our sincere appreciation to Officer Peterson for his dedication and sacrifices he makes by deed, remark, and attitude. Sign and seal this day, the 20th of February, 2018.
I gotta give you one of these.
Please.
I don't have a lot to say, I'm not the best at speeches, but let's make it short. I just want to thank you for the award, it's an honor. That's all I've got to say.
I'll tell you what, when you work like you do, you don't have to say a lot. We appreciate you and as the mayor, I just want to tell you to keep up the good work, I want to encourage you. We definitely appreciate having you in the City of Burlington. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Tonight, we have some, yeah, we'll let, I know you guys got stuff to do, they've got work to do, so we're not gonna hold that up. All right. Next, we've got some proclamations tonight, and this is part of my job that I enjoy the most, and I love to recognize people that mean a lot to our community. And tonight, I've got the opportunity to recognize some people that they do a lot, they do a lot. And it's interesting, you'd like to think that it would be the youth that would be carrying us into tomorrow, but you'd be surprised that it's the people that have snow on the roof, that should be kicking back, taking it easy, that are getting it done, that are getting it done. And we owe a great debt to our volunteers, so I'm honored tonight to give these away. I wish I could give you more stuff, but I don't have more stuff to give you, so I'm just gonna have to give you these and a bracelet, but we appreciate you, we appreciate you. First off is, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian, your volunteerism and commitment to help your fellow man, driving for two years, volunteering 209 hours, driving 1,759 miles. You make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On February 20th, 2018, this mayor's award is presented to Joanne Williams, would you please come down? Joanne Williams. Give me a hug. Everybody hates this part, like, no, don't make me do it, don't make me do it. And I'm gonna give this to Joanne. Thank you so much, we certainly appreciate you, and would you come to the podium and would you have some words to say? Please, please.
Well, I am very pleased to receive the award tonight. I don't feel like I did all that much for it. Every time I take someone to a doctor's appointment, or even when I'm delivering meals, every time I meet some of these people, it's like getting a new friend. And I enjoy it.
My next rock star tonight, to be it known on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian, your volunteerism and commitment to help your fellow man, driving for six years, volunteering 712 hours, driving 5,953 miles. You make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On February 20th, 2018, this mayor's award is presented to Lynn Ozenisky. Lynn, come on down. That's what I'm talking about. Come on, Lynn, bring it in. All right, Lynn, we appreciate you, let me give you this. Thank you so much, sir. Would you please?
Pictures are not necessary, snap pictures.
They gave Lynn the email, he knew the demo coming up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the recognition, but there are numerous other volunteers, I think, that are equally deserving of this award, so I will keep doing the job I'm doing, and I want to give a shout out to Mary Main, our coordinator, who gets the job done. Thank you all.
I would just like to say for the record, I asked Mary Main to marry me, she turned me down, but I did ask, so, just want people to know that. All right, tonight, the next one that we have, man, we got all rock stars tonight. You hold still, my friend, I finally got you down here, too. On behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian, your volunteerism and commitment to help your fellow man, driving nearly 11 years, volunteering 1,119 hours, and driving 8,636 miles. You make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On February 20th, 2018, this mayor's award is presented to Barbara Carlson. Come on down here.
Is this working?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you all for the award. We all really enjoy doing this service for the clients, and they're all so appreciative that it makes us feel good. Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you. And nobody go, since we give the last one out, we want to get a photo of all of you before you all leave, so. Okay, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian, your volunteerism and commitment to help your fellow man, driving nearly 12 years, volunteering 2,007 hours, and driving 16,898 miles. That's almost to the moon, I think. You make Burlington and all the aliens along the way a great place to live, work, and play. On February 20th, 2018, this mayor's award is presented to Margie Marshall, would you please come on down?
Come on down.
I'll tell you what, you've driven 1,000 miles in some truck drivers. Come and have a word, hon.
Well, it's the same thing everybody said, we all enjoy it, and you meet these people and you feel sorry for them because they do not have family to help them, and we help them, and they do appreciate it. And I've taken lots and lots of people and met a lot of friends. Thank you.
We've got one more of these, and to top it off, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian, your volunteerism and commitment to help your fellow man, driving for nearly 13 years, volunteering 1,610 hours, and driving 13,662 miles. You make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play for a long, long time. On February 20th, 2018, this mayor's award is presented to Kay Russell. Come on down, Kay. You don't like driving in, too, don't you?
Twenty years.
Yes, yes.
Just many more.
Well, I'll tell you what, I may need a ride, I'll be calling you. Would you come to the podium and have a word, please?
Well, thank you so much for this, and I appreciate it, and enjoy doing the job and hope to do it many more years. And yeah, you meet a lot of nice people and they are appreciative, and thank you.
Get all of you guys real quick and just get a picture of all of the council, you guys want to get in on this, these are Burlington's winners. Mr. Tisland, can I get you this? Let's just get us all, let's get us all together. Come on up here with us, how about that? That's right. Come on up here. You guys are awesome. Well, come on, we're a short person, I'm a bald person. There's room for everybody. Short and beautiful, bald and ugly, you know. Mary Main. Mary Main, we need you in the Stephanie's, Stephanie's gonna come and take that, we want you in this picture, too, Mayor.
Where should I fit you?
When you look as good as you do, you get where we want you. But your hair didn't whatnot, she's trying to show off.
Do you want to squeeze in, do you want to see everybody?
Yes.
Thank you guys for coming, thank you so much.
After I wrote that wonderful write-up about that policeman getting the award, I thought, oh, I could have gone on forever about my own driver. They're awesome.
They are awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you all again for coming down, thank you so much for all of you. I've got one more to give out tonight, and I'll wait till, you guys can go ahead and get on that here, but I do have one more. I've been trying to reach this gentleman for, I've been trying to give him this award since last year, I've been trying to run him down, but he stays so busy, he's here, there, and everywhere, but I finally got him locked down tonight, but I'm proud to give him this award. I know people that work for you, and they have the greatest things to say. You're taking care of a lot of people, helping people to provide for their families, giving them a good place to work, it's important. There's a lot of old buildings downtown, and you helped beautify one of our main streets, as a matter of fact, it's called Main Street. And just, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go on and on and on, somebody will think I got a crush on the guy, but let me make it perfectly clear, we need good business people in Burlington, and we need them to stay and do business in Burlington, and to hire people in Burlington. It's important to our community, and I'm just glad to be able to recognize somebody that knows the importance of that tonight. On behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian, your commitment to this community personally and in business is honorable and my admiration cannot be expressed in words. Your contribution helps make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On February 20th, 2018, this mayor's award is presented to Mr. Matt Coffin. Come on down, Mr. Matt Coffin. I finally got you. This guy's running everywhere, give you one of those, and let me give you this, and would you please come to the podium and have a word, please?
Well, I guess I'm representing Frank Millard and Company for this, and we had a lot of cooperation from the city in order to be able to do what we did, because we had to think outside the box a little bit on trying to get that corner lot that was part of the cities, and with the deal we worked out with the trade, allowed us to be able to build a building that looked a lot better than if we wouldn't have been able to do it. And our whole goal from the beginning was to try to build something that fit and looked good, and, you know, fit with architecture, and yet, even though it's a manufacturing facility, we tried to make it look like it wasn't, and I think we did that.
Looks great. Yeah, looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get somebody to take a picture? Yeah, okay. Do you have a good camera, because mine's a joke? Okay, yeah.
You want to hold your award, or?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Now, tonight, before we get into the ugly stuff, if you would, please.
I thought you said before we get into the ugly.
Starting power forward, for the chiefs, imagine that. There he is in all of his glory, tongue hanging out, just like Michael Jordan used to do. I know, this guy could do it, he had the wheels, he had it all, so we recognize our chief, who we're going to be losing, but I think we're really gaining something here. The memories of all the pictures, I'm not, we've got more coming, but there he is, he's our own, we love him, that's him, and yeah, the tongue hanging out, I wouldn't recommend people do that, you probably, you got a really good chance of biting that. Anyways, Chief, we want to recognize you tonight, but first, before we do, we're gonna give everybody a chance to greatest picture tonight, and we're gonna start with peanut butter, we're gonna start with you, and we're gonna work our way to this one, we're gonna let Rinker close up.
Five. I love his athleticism. Five.
You know, as a hair aficionado, because I haven't had hair in a long time, first I was amazed by what it looked like, a mullet photo, and now this one looks like you maybe have a fro.
A little wild.
A little wild, and you got the tongue hanging out, I'm gonna give you a four dash O for your number.
Four O.
Forty.
I give a question mark. I just don't know what he's doing. I mean, you know, is he really jumping, are you standing on a chair? It looks prop to me, I don't think you've got that much air underneath your legs, I can only give him a question mark tonight.
Those other kids, the kids down below look like they're questioning it, too, it's like, what? What's going on?
Thanks for recognizing.
Chief, did you make that shot?
Couldn't tell you.
Couldn't tell you.
So I went negative for you, because it looks like you missed it. And that's the jersey number, so.
There you go. Well, since you wore jersey number four, Chief, would you come on down here for a minute?
Chief, could you keep coming after you retire? This is fun.
Yeah, so I do want to thank Mary for supplying us with the pictures, God bless her. We know that you want to disappear here, you're going on vacation and whatnot, so here's a t-shirt to wear underneath your other things and whatnot, so that you can disappear into the woods and get lost, so.
Well, I appreciate that, I ain't got to fight the collection.
We still got, we still got to our meetings, so you ain't lost yet.
Thank you very much.
You want to have a word, Chief?
No, I'm good.
You know the last meeting, though, you're gonna have to talk, so.
I can't win this.
We're gonna let you slide, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters, I'm sorry, all matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be the routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have six resolutions. The first is a resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for higher license for Robin Canova, doing business as A2Z Taxi LLC. The second is a resolution awarding bid for the 2017 Law Enforcement Center site work improvements. The third is a resolution approving the purchase of easements from 2830 Wine Guard Drive, Pen Number 11-31-176-015, for the construction of a storm sewer associated with the Vineyard Drainage Project. The fourth is a resolution approving Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. The fifth is a resolution approving application for funds through the Community Catalyst Building Remediation Program with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And the sixth is a resolution supporting and approving application to the Wellmark Foundation's Large Match Grant Application for the improvements to DeEdwin and Gladys White Memorial Park. We have some public hearings set for March 5th. The first is for consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Agency Street Widening Project East End. The second is consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property locally known as 333 Curran Street from R2 Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District. The third is a consideration of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to the standard penalty applicable, sorry, to certain sections of the code and violations thereof. The fourth is consideration of agreement with Burlington Community School District relative to use of Dankwart and Crapo Park Tennis Courts. The fifth is consideration of fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. And then we also have some appointments. Board of Housing Standards and Appeals, Jan Jaeger, we thank you. Human Rights Commission, Unity Litten, thank you. Low-Rent Housing Agency, Linda Hild, thank you. Parks Advisory Committee, Kelly Morris, thank you. And Renewable Energy Committee, Jeff Leinberger, Steve Rowland, Michael Gorman, Keith Jacobs, and Roger Gard, we thank you so much for all your hard work, it is truly appreciated. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed? Counsel?
I'll have that beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes removed, simply because my name is on a permit for the Rotary Club's annual event coming up, so in the interest of full disclosure, we'll just, I want to be able to abstain from that.
Okay, anybody else?
Correct me on this one, Mayor, on the public hearings date, that's just so we can discuss it, right?
That is correct.
So we leave it on there, so we can discuss it on that day?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm fine then.
Okay. Can I get a motion then?
Move, oh, sorry, Matt.
Make a motion to approve all listed under Consent 1 Consent Agenda except for beer, wine, liquor, and cigarettes.
Second. Let's move to second. Kathleen, let's move.
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. You keep wanting to go to Annie, don't you?
I know, I do.
Okay, now's the time for consideration of an application for CDBG Pilot Program Upper Story Rental Rehab Program Funds through IEDA. Mr. Tisland?
Dan Eberhart from Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission here to kind of go over this program and what it all entails.
Dan?
Yeah, Dan Eberhart, Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission. Back in August, September of 2017, the State of Iowa, more specifically, the Iowa Economic Development Authority invited pilot projects from different communities throughout the state of Iowa to submit for upper story redevelopment of apartments of downtown buildings. We submitted a few of those projects, there were 12 of those that were submitted throughout the state, and four were selected to come back to submit as a full application, Burlington being one of those. So, we are submitting a project on behalf of the City of Burlington utilizing community development block grant funds for the building, everybody knows it as the book-in buildings on the corner of Sixth and Jefferson Street. So, the building owner there is working on developing an application to submit to the Economic Development Authority. These funds have to go through the City of Burlington, you're just a flow-through of funds. This application is due this Friday, the 23rd, so we want to try to submit all of this material. And the nice thing is, unlike a lot of applications, we're gonna know right away if we're gonna be successful by March 8th, I believe. So we are applying for $500,000.
By March 8th?
By March 8th. So that's quick turnaround time. And it's a quick turnaround time because we were notified about January 10th to submit this, so it doesn't give you much time. So we've been scrambling to try to put together all of the requirements for the application. So I think it's gonna be a good project, like I said, the state likes it, we were one of four projects throughout the state of Iowa to submit, so that's great, they know the building, they like it, so we're gonna put in and keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully we can get some money back down here to the City of Burlington to keep doing some redevelopment downtown.
Fantastic.
So, anyway, so we're gonna try to put together everything, like I said, there's really no responsibility on the city's part, the flow-through of funds is through you, and it will actually be the City of Burlington that will hold the lien on this building for five years until this five-year period of affordability is transpired for this project. The building owner has to promise to keep the apartments affordable for five years, and that would, he's looking at doing two-bedroom apartments, and to give you an idea of that, that would be like one person making $36,000 a year, so that's not really low income, but that's very affordable for a lot of people in Burlington, so. Any questions? Good, I didn't even have to give you a hug tonight.
Dan? We'll talk later. Anyways, okay, so.
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Before you do, is there anybody from the audience that has any concerns? Okay, I got a thumbs up from Rob. Yes, sir?
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Second.
Kathleen?
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the application for CDBG Pilot Program Upper Story Rental Rehab Program Funds through IEDA.
Sorry.
Kathleen?
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Well done. Okay, next, consideration of approval of a development agreement with Park West LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments in an amount not to exceed $350,000. Mr. Tisland?
And this is the final phase of this process going through, that was started last, end of last year. The development agreement lays out, I guess, process for reimbursement of funds through the tip process, this is an annual appropriation, looking again to construct 16 lots, single and two-family residential on this property just southwest avenue. This agreement is just for this property, homes ranging from $180,000 to $275,000. Current taxable value of the property is $22,000, any increment above that is what would be the rebate based on. The last page of the development agreement is blank, that's what he has to fill out each year as a developer, verifying what the value is and what the increase is each year to help determine what the increment that he would receive back each year would be. Does estimate connections to be completed approximately May, June of this year, and start construction upon completion of that, provided this agreement is approved. The developer did stop in today, he's not able to be here tonight, he had a meeting out of town and didn't want to get stuck in the weather, so that's why he's not here tonight, but I guess with that, it's something we've discussed quite a bit, if there's any further questions, I can try and answer them.
So do we have any questions from the audience, anyone? Yes, sir? Yes, sir? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thanks.
We've got one for you.
Thank you. Yes, I would.
Leon Shahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. As you well know, I'm opposed to TIF. Um, with, even with the new development, the city incurs costs for police, fire, snow removal, other services. If the new development isn't paying for those services, homeowners like me who've owned our properties for 30 years plus are paying for it. And it's really from the, I've talked in the past about the study by Swinson and others at Iowa State University. That's what I've handed you. If you look at the highlighted area for Burlington, pretty much in this study which was done for a 10-year period ending in 2006, Burlington was the poster child for bad behavior. For every dollar increase in an urban renewal zone, it costs the city $2 in housing areas like where I live. It's a losing game. If I have to pay property taxes for somebody else, that's money I don't have to maintain my home. And the, the approach has been, well, if it doesn't work the first time, it'll work if we do a bigger and bigger and bigger project. I ask you, is the population of Burlington increasing? No, it is not. We've lost a quarter of our population since 1970. It's not working.
Thank you, Mr. Shahean. Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Kreitzer?
Robert Kreitzer, 810 North Fifth. Um, I want to start out by saying that, um, most of you probably read an article I wrote in the paper about TIF. I don't know Mr. Cahill personally. I just was here when he was talking about it. Um, to me, in order, in order for Burlington to succeed, we have to grow. That's why we're working on the downtown. That's why we're doing other things. Um, you know, I looked at this and I realized TIF's not for everything. TIF out at the Red Plex, when we, we redid all that area, um, you know, that's great. We took a, an area that we weren't using for anything. We put businesses there, and they pay a lot of taxes, uh, and they invested a lot in the, the community, and it created jobs. Um, if we go through with this development, um, they did it in 94, and they had 57 lots. Uh, they used TIF that time, and they created revenue from, uh, July of 2006 through June of 2017. Uh, the figures here were, was 1.9 million, a little over 1.9 million. Um, so, with the, the TIF, right, you know, right now they're, what, he's paying like $328 a year in taxes. Um, yes, they're going to get, he's going to get a tax abatement for 10 years, but there's going to be houses there, there's going to be new taxpayers there. I do think people will buy these lots and move in these homes. Uh, it's in a school district that we need students in, course is probably done, uh, in the future, but we have a middle school right there. We just put in a new running path in that area. There's, there's reasons to be in that neighborhood right now, so I think that if we, if we add a little bit of our tax base over the next 10 years, I, I think that Burlington needs to grow, and I think this is what we need to grow. If we keep moving people out of the county and people keep leaving our schools and, and abandoning Burlington, then, yeah, we're, we're just going to keep losing people and, and our population will keep going down, but we need to give people incentive to come here. And so, we, you know, besides a positive attitude, which is great, we, um, you know, we have to have projects like this once in a while. I wouldn't say that this is going to work for every project, that TIF's for everything, but I think in this case, it probably is. I mean, I think this is a win for us.
Robert Kreitzer, are you running for City Council?
Not yet.
He has to graduate from Citizens Academy first.
Mr. Renteria, off about your faces tonight.
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. Um, so, my comment on this has to do with the long-term plan for the city and the backdrop of our 25-year plan and how well this project fits into that. And when you look at the need for infill in the city and, uh, the, the lower cost associated with that, um, because that infrastructure is already in place, we have empty lots all over the city. So, the, so I'm not really advocating or, uh, opposing this. Um, the question I have for the council is whether or not you've set this particular proposal against the long-term goals and plans for the city so that you have a basis for making the decision as opposed to shooting from the hip on a one-by-one basis where the answer may be different every single time. The answer should be the same every single time because the long-term plan should dictate what it is that you're trying to accomplish over the next 25 to 50 years. So, I'll get off my soapbox with that.
Thanks. Well said, well said. Anybody else from the audience?
I have a question about TIF. We didn't get to it in the Citizens Academy. So, TIF, um, there's already a fund there that we, that we build on, and then you use those TIF funds to pay back or only accrue as they, as they pay their taxes, and then it's a rebate after the fact. How does TIF work exactly?
In this case, we, the city is not taking any liability on, with the funds.
It's only refunded as it's earned.
So, right, so...
So, as the building, as the development occurs, um, income that is received is refunded to the developer based on the terms of the TIF.
Okay, that's the way I understood it. So, it's, he's a rebate after, after it's done.
Correct.
So, he's going to spend roughly $350,000 on infrastructure in a neighborhood that I think we talked about in the 90s at one time. That's when I was a teenager, so maybe I wasn't paying attention, but, um, you know, if he's building the infrastructure and we're paying that back, um, you know, let him foot the bill for a little bit, and, uh, and then he can collect in, in TIF after the fact, but, um, I think it'd be a good neighborhood, too. And, and I, I agree with what Mr. Renteria said. There needs to be a long-term plan for this, and maybe a case-by-case basis isn't necessarily what we need to do, but, um, you know, with infill, the neighborhood, that location's a good location to build a neighborhood. Uh, I don't like the idea of moving things out of town. Um, like, I don't, is that bit out there on Summer Street, is that even in the City of Burlington, or is that county? Like, where we're building out there, do you know if that's county or city?
That's city.
That's city. But that's about as far as we go, right?
Where?
Where, Summer meets Madison?
Yeah.
Is that still in the city?
Yeah, but we go out to, uh...
How far out do we go?
No, it's not in the city.
It goes all the way out to, uh...
That's not city?
It's not in the city limits. If you, as soon as you go past Kastner, that's county.
See, so...
So, if you're referring to Ryan Nagraki's development had to be annexed into the city...
I thought we, we already did annex that property.
That piece, however, if you go...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying if Burlington's going to expand, I wanted to expand in Burlington limits. I don't want to keep pushing Burlington farther and farther out when it's actually in the county.
Oh, unless we address the infill, we're running out of space. Yeah, you're right.
Right, so, we, we need some infill. Um, these other lots here, um, I would think that they would be up for consideration, too, if they wanted to be developed later. I, I would consider that since it's, we've already started the ball rolling if we, we approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience? Have you seen none? Okay, counsel?
Uh, real quick, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Renteria's question as to whether it fits in, and the only thing I would say there is, different councils are going to have different ideas. Um, so, a council that approves, um, the long-term, uh, vision for Burlington 10 years ago, uh, is going to change every time newly-elected officials are elected, uh, or, or people are elected to the seat. So, I think at the end of the day, we make these decisions with that vision in mind. Um, but, uh, two years from now, we could have a different council, and in four years, we could have completely different councils, so there may be a different objective or opinion or decision made by those councils with regard to this, so...
Yeah, the, the Planning Commission is working on some, some, uh, regulations or rules, uh, using TIF going forward, so, uh, that, that'll help, too.
I think by the end of the year, we will see something on paper that provides guidelines as to what's going to qualify and what's not, and we'll be able to abide by those and use those as a determination as whether or not these are approved.
And just to, uh, before we, before we vote, I just want to throw this out there just so people understand where I'm coming from on my vote. Um, I, I stated again at the beginning of the year, I'm ready to, uh, step on the brakes a little bit. Um, there, there comes a time where, where you get desperate for things and you have to make things happen. Um, and I think we were in that mode for a while where we really needed to make things happen. The danger with that is, is you get, you never get out of let's-make-it-happen mode, and sometimes you need to get out of let's-make-it-happen mode to let's-allow-it-to-happen mode. And to me, I would just like to see us allow things to happen more organically. You brought up a point, you said, man, that'd make a great, you know, that neighborhood would be great for, uh, for that addition, you know? I agree, I agree, and I believe that, uh, it's going to happen organically if you give enough time. I'm just throwing that out there, so, uh, I just want people to understand, I have nothing against the development, I think it is a great idea. Is there anything else? Kathleen?
Actually, we need a motion to close.
Yeah, sorry about that. I have a motion to close, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen?
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Uh, Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the development agreement with Park West LLC authorizing annual appropriation of tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Let's take it to vote. Kathleen?
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, resolution? Your Honor, I have a resolution approving an agreement with Stanley Consultants Incorporated to prefer, perform construction inspection for the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge.
I need a second. Second.
Uh, Mr. Mack?
Uh, in front of you is a resolution approving, uh, a contract with Stanley Consultants to do construction, administration, and inspection, uh, for the upcoming Mount Pleasant Street project, for the bridge. Um, I think last week I maybe didn't fully, uh, conversate the reasons behind why we selected Stanley versus outs, any sort of outside firm or doing it internally. Um, because Stanley did the design, it's kind of irregular to use another firm to do, uh, inspection. Um, that being said, you could use the, somebody else. Um, I have a piece of paper where I did some work, um, to show kind of the money for the basis of internal engineering on there. I have the $541,000 that it would, it's potentially going to cost us to use Stanley. And I also took the amount, uh, we charge a percentage amount. Um, in this case, we have federal funds, which is a million dollars, so we'll probably, I think we've brought budget, uh, we do it on a percentage basis, 314,000. Um, after looking at the, the professional services agreement more indepthly, I realized that we would, that they had construction, or structural engineering, um, in there, and we don't have anybody on staff that has structural, uh, engineering background, so we would have to consult with somebody should there be change orders. Uh, when they're putting up the H-beams, uh, we wouldn't be able to, if there was a need to change some sort of location, uh, or some sort of, uh, part in the project, we'd have to consult with the structural engineer. Therefore, I put some money in there, the same amount, uh, that Stanley used, uh, for structural engineer hours and time. Um, and then I also put in the, the amount of money necessary to do the testing that Stanley is also going to use. So, it brings the price tag up to about $431,000, which is still a, a, a gap of $100,000 from what Stanley is char, would be charging us versus what we would cost us potentially. I don't, I don't have a full-depth understanding of what it would take to do it internally. I know that we would have to upgrade some of the testing materials inside of our, uh, facility. Um, I don't know what kind of certica, certification that takes. Um, so, the reason to choose Stanley, I believe, is, is one, the liability. This is a, a million dollars worth of federal aid, um, and having the construction, administration inspection on them, um, is, I think is beneficial. And also, the, the amount of workload that my staff has this year, um, to take this type of a project, which is a year-long, off of their shoulders would be, is greatly impactful on what they're able to do for other things. Um, to give you kind of an idea on where they were last year, project-wise, to this year, last year they had eight projects running, this year they have 15. So, we have quite a few projects running. Um, they'll be running pretty wild, anyway, and so, th, this project seems like the one to use outside engineering for inspection.
Okay. Now, any questions from the audience? Counsel? You answered my questions last week.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Kathleen?
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. Last resolution.
The final last resolution, drum roll. I have a resolution, Your Honor, approving urban revitalization tax exemption pursuant to Chapter 404 of the State Code of Iowa Tax Abatements.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Still?
Okay, this is the resolution that we do annually for, um, people that are seeking tax abatements. They apply, um, throughout the year, and then they're all due February 1st. Um, we go through a process of making sure that they've got their building permit and that they've passed all the inspections before we approve the tax abatement. Um, so, you'll certify these, um, properties that have applied for this. Um, Annette will file it with the assessor's office, and then they will see their taxes abated in the future. Um, basically, what you see on these valuations, though, in the resolution is just the estimate of the building permit. It's not the amount that will be actually abated. It's, you know, that's all done through the assessor's office, they'll do it by property. Um, so, you can see in Exhibit A, um, we had this year two, uh, more residential properties apply for it than last year, one more renovation residential, um, and then, um, the business and commercial we had for this year, and last year we had three. So, also, last week at the, um, work session I shared with you, um, once these property taxes get abated, then we do request from the county to see the change year-to-year in tax shares where, you know, what's going off schedule because, um, anybody who applies it could either be a three-year, they decide to do 100% three-year, or a 10-year sliding scale. Um, so, that's nothing that we track here, but then the county gives us a report, so I shared that with you last year. Um, and then, in the 2017 tax year, um, our abatement did go down slightly by 80, um, 83,000, but approximately, right now, we're seeing about $500,000 of property taxes being abated, um, through this program, you know, in this current year. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Steph? Thank you, Steph. Any questions from the audience? Mr. Shane?
I wouldn't miss it for anything.
Hey, man, I'll tell you what, I'd be disappointed if you did.
Leon just Shahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street, Burlington. Um, I just, if you ever wonder if anybody reads what's on, online before the meeting, I do, every dime. Um, looking at your Exhibit A, the, the first page that was there showing the benefits of the program since its inception in 1992, and the number of houses and applications and whatnot, the valuation that you're talking about, 139 million, sounds like a lot of money. You're still...
That's not?
When it, when it comes to your assessed valuation and, and what you really have to do to keep up with where you once were, no. Um, I went, took the liberty, looking at your last comprehensive, uh, annual financial report, and it showed for residential valuation, about $800,000 for single-family homes and an assessed valuation for multifamily of 31 million. So, nice round numbers, let's just talk, um, $850,000, doesn't exactly add up to that, but it was year-old data that I was looking at. For tax depreciation on, and Matt, you know about this, on residential rental property, an assessed valuation for multifamily of 31 million. So nice round numbers, let's just talk, $850,000 doesn't exactly add up to that, but it was year-old data that I was looking at. For tax depreciation on, and Matt, you know about this, on residential rental property, you can depreciate that over 27 and a half years, nice round numbers. Basically, using that, assuming that's a correct approach, property depreciates at a rate of about 4% per year. For commercial property, you're allowed 30, 39-year depreciation. Both of those are kind of geared toward economic development also, and I'll spare you my lecture on that. In reality, as a homeowner, I can tell you, about 50 years, you need to do a lot of work. And that's 2% a year. If you look at this program, that you've been at it now for 25 years, basically, half of your valuation has depreciated. That's over 400,000, or 400 million dollars. You've only added with this program 139 million. And this is kind of what I'm trying to tell you about the whole TIF, abatements, rebates, whatever incentives there are out there. If you don't have the jobs, people aren't going to come to town. If you don't bring jobs that pay a good wage, people are not going to come to town. Most of this development that's occurred over the last 25 years, and I'll use your terms, Mayor, would have been organic anyway. You're paying roughly, and I just did a rule, kind of hipshot, and estimated that this would cost the taxpayers, like me, another half million dollars, and she confirmed, on average, your abatements are a program costing you a half million dollars a year. Again, somebody has to make that up. That's, our household, my neighbors, and everybody else who's owned their property for decades, we're paying that half a million dollars. The city still has to provide services for those streets, snow removal, police, fire protection. Somebody has to pay for that. My assertion here is, if you didn't have this program at all, you might have lost 10% of the valuation increase. I'm paying a lot more in property taxes than what you're gaining.
Thank you, Mr. Shahan. Anybody else from the audience? Counselor? You guys are good?
I'm fine.
Kathleen?
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. Man, you guys have been awesome tonight.
We have beer, liquor.
Beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes. That's right. All right, he pulled it.
Okay, I have a motion to approve it separately. Right, Kathleen?
Second.
Just want to refresh, just in case somebody just popped in while you...
Just, so I have an, a, application for a beer and wine permit for the Burlington Rotary Club Art Auction that's coming up on March 8th. It's my name on the application, so I felt that it would be appropriate to have it pulled so that I don't necessarily vote on it.
It's no big deal, but he's trying to...
Be as crystal clear as possible with everybody involved, so...
There we go. Any problems from the audience? We're good, I thought so. Okay. Kathleen?
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
I'm going to abstain.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Yes. Okay. Now, now can I move, can I go ahead?
Let's do it.
All right, just make it two. Mr. Tissler?
Nothing?
Okay. Kathleen, do you have anything tonight? Okay. Counselor, Murray?
I do have something really exciting. If you saw the newspaper this week, Burlington ranked among top cities, that makes me want to get my pom-poms out and cheer. I am really excited about this. So if you missed this, in Sunday's paper, Burlington ranked among top cities, and it was second year in a row, or fifth year in a row, I was a little bit confused on that. But anyway, we've won this multiple times, so the recipe is right, we're cooking up some good things in Burlington, so I'm really excited about that. And registration is now open for the Great River Bridge Race, so lace up your running shoes, get on that treadmill, and May 19th, put that on your calendar.
Shane? I've got a first place medal at my house, that I wrote first place on the back of it that I stole from downstairs. Anyways, I, I, I forgot to see if there was anybody that had any, any comments. I know you probably have something you wanted to address, so can I have you come through that? Yes, sir.
Sorry, I butted in front of you there.
No, that's all right. I'm going to be impatient. Let me just give a couple handouts. I'm not handing all this stuff out. Real quick, be right there.
We need to get your name in there.
I will, I'm sorry, no, I will do that. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Christopher Repke, 1306 Madison Avenue. If you remember, I stopped and I visited with you about the bike lanes and the grant application that the city made. This is, I sent letters to, 96 letters were mailed to Madison Avenue residents, I had a meeting, and I sent an email to you too, with the summary of this, and the petitions. Did you all receive that?
Did?
Yeah, okay. Now, if you do want physical copies, I will make them and drop them off. I'm just trying to save a little paper, so I'm not killing a lot of trees. I can make those copies. This let me know I'll drop them off in the, here at City Hall on Friday. So this is, this is the summary, you've received it by email, they're all PDFs. If you need the actual physical copies, please let me know, I will do that. But just wanted to let you know that these are the petitions I received, there's some in there that I think you should maybe take a look at, still subject to revision. If you want copies of the petitions, I can also send them a PDF, if anybody else wants them, I can send them in that way also. A couple of this for disclosure, I did share these petitions and another letter with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning, because that's where the grant application goes to, and understanding the whole process, they do the scoring, so I also went to them. And the person I talked to was Zach James, and he goes, nobody's ever done this before. So I kind of surprised them with it. And so this for disclosure, I've done that, and taking a look at the city's grant application, I did give him a letter concerning that application. So this, this to let you know for public, you know, full disclosure. Also, for the new city council members who maybe didn't see that, have a chance to read the grant application, because it was done in December, maybe if you get a chance to read that grant application. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. You are thorough and consistent, my friend. Is there anybody else from the audience that has any concerns? I'll, I'll work my way to the front. Let me start with Mr. Renneria, and we'll, we'll end with Leon Shahan. How sweet does he get?
Eric Renneria, 907 High Street. I just wanted to share some thoughts on the, on the parking situation downtown. I think I've spoken with most of you, and, and I've gotten some initial feedback from folks on the signs, and, and there's, there is a fair amount of confusion in regard to the amount of information that's on the signs. And it's, it's, it's not, when you're, when you're driving, it's, it's a little bit difficult to discern whether or not...
Old signs?
I'm sorry?
You're talking, you're talking the old signs that we've had, right?
No, I'm talking about the, the new signs. When you're driving, it's a, it's a bit of a challenge, because there's five different statuses of, of parking on those. So some of the early feedback that I've gotten has been that there's a lot to read while you're driving, as to whether or not you can park in those spots. And some folks have told me that, that they saw the little signs in all of the spots and thought that all of the parking had subsequently been leased, so they did not park there. So they, they just weren't able to, at the speed of a moving car, determine whether or not they could park in that parking lot. So the, the other thing that I wanted to just bring up to the councils, I had sent an email requesting some information about the amount of revenue that's collected from the yellow boxes. And I don't know how hard it is to get that information, but I would think that that would be fairly easy to get. So if I could get that information, I would be very appreciative of that. I'm, I'm just trying to have a clear understanding. What I was told is that the revenue from the yellow boxes was used to maintain the lots. I don't think that that's the case, and I would like to get some clarification on that. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sure. Mr. Shahan, come on down.
Once again, Leon Shahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street, first the non-controversial. The Streets Department was down in front of my place checking out sewers for a possible problem. I don't know what's going on, but it's of concern between Cook Street and Gertrude. On Mount Pleasant Street, there's about five sinkholes.
What street? Hook?
Cook.
Cook and...
As in, what you do for dinner, you cook dinner.
Sometimes.
Where they cut the pavement for the stormwater separation, these things have sunk again with the rains that we've just had. And there's about five of them there. And just right down where they made the cut, and I don't know whether the sanitary sewer has collapsed, the storm sewer is leaking, I haven't, I didn't call the Streets Department, but the, just with the rains we've had, the condition looks like it's worsened. I don't, I don't want to be driving down the street and bury my little car.
We got the proper ears in the room, they'll be on it.
Then on to the more controversial, there's been a lot of press as far as the franchise tax on utilities. I view this, and Pat and I have had a conversation about it already, but I view that as a revenue stream to fund the riverfront improvements, including the flood wall. There's a precedent for that happening in the past, the sales tax, local option sales tax that we have. The contention at the time when it was put before the voters was, we would lose police officers if we didn't pass it. However, half of the proceeds would be used for property tax reduction. That never happened. Those proceeds, the initial project was the old Hotel Burlington, and you can go back through the tax, your tax records, there has never been a property tax reduction due to the sales tax, the local option sales tax. I see this utility franchise tax with a promise of more police officers and some sort of offset in our property taxes. That isn't going to happen either. It never has, and it never will. The problem you have is when you look, and I call it project laundering, when you look at all that's being proposed or talked about, and I've looked at the 10-year comprehensive plan, there's long been a desire for flood control downtown, there's also a desire for downtown hotel, other shopping experiences along the riverfront. My contention, and in the past conversation I just had, my feeling, I've got a libertarian leaning, if it was economically viable, somebody would do it. If it's not economically viable, the government shouldn't be subsidizing people to do it. The other issue you have is with the river itself. We've got two new council members, and sometimes there's snickers, but I've read a lot of scientific white papers in dealing with the Mississippi River. I'll be quick.
Oh, no, I'm letting you go, I said we have three new members.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm just messing with you anyway. Leon, go ahead.
With the Mississippi River, you have to understand the monster you're trying to tame. And there's been snickers in the past, but if you read the scientific papers, the Mississippi River has wandered as far east as what we now call the Illinois River. There's still a visible channel when you drive Interstate 80 in northern Illinois, it's near Atkinson, Princeton. On the west, the Mississippi River has gone around the north side of Muscatine, and you know it, and it's still occupied waterways, the lower Waps, the Pinnacle, the lower Cedar, and the lower Iowa River are actually an old channel of the Mississippi. There's also another channel that connects the Iowa River with the Skunk River, there's a lot of controversy about that, but you're talking about a river whose course has varied by 100 miles. And the forces and the nature that cause that aren't presently upon us, yet anyway. But if the Mississippi River can continue to flow with the presence of an ice sheet 1,000 feet deep, your little 10- or 12-foot flood wall is just a minor annoyance to Mother When you're looking at increasing our taxes on the most vulnerable people, they're utilities, and they're talking about doing away with energy assistance, and then on top of that, increased taxes for these people. For a $100 million project, when you look at all the things you're talking about, I know the, what's been approved so far is 66 million, but when you talk cost overruns and the other things that are going to come with this, it's a $100 million project that's going to be on our backs, going to increase our taxes, and in the long-term scheme of things, you're not going to control the Mississippi River. It'd be better just to leave Mother Nature alone and leave our taxes as is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are we good from the audience?
Robert Kreiter, 10 North Fifth. I think Leon should be at the Citizens Academy. I've learned a lot just sitting here listening to you, I really do.
I second that, or a history teacher. I didn't know that about the river, that's fascinating.
So I've talked to people about the property tax or the franchise fee. I asked about people wanting more police officers, fire department, or whatever. A lot of people want police officers, they want firefighters, but they don't want to pay for them. So I, one guy was like, under no circumstances do I want to pay more taxes ever. My friend Charles Webb said, I think we need them, so I'll pay. And that was his answer. We don't have the golden goose anymore. We, we used to have a toll booth there on the, on the bridge, and that money was just coming into Burlington, and we were using that to pay for police department, fire department, and this is the craziest idea I ever had. But if somebody could come up with another golden goose, something that, you know, I don't want to pay a toll to cross the bridge, but what's a quarter for every car that goes through there? Or something else. I mean, we, we have, if we want that, we have to come up with it somehow. As for Leon's comment about the river, we're already here, we're going to have to deal with what we've got, and we can't abandon our, our river for, that is a draw for Burlington. We could, we could let it be, but we're not going to do steamboat days down there, we're not going to have businesses down there. Our memorial auditorium will be gone, the port will be gone, Big Muddy's will be gone, the marina will be gone. We can, we can let her run all the way up to the, to the bluff.
This guy's coming with gloom and doom, it'll be gone. It'll be gone.
Right? Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know...
Build a raft, dress up as Tom Sawyer.
We, we can, we can start at Main Street, I guess, if we want to let the river have it. I'm not, I'm not making light of what he's saying, but that, it's a possibility, and I try to do that, I try to consider possibilities that don't even make sense in my mind, or just seem off the wall like the, like a toll booth idea. It sounds nutty, but like, part of me is like, you know, I, I don't know. But I, I consider things like that, and then I eliminate them and take them off the table as, as I realize it's not a viable option. So, yeah, I'm happy with what we're doing. If we want more police and firefighters, we do have to come up with some money. I saw that we might pick up that $350,000, is it an emergency vehicle fund, or what is that, Matt?
There's, there's a couple of different names tied to it, but yes.
Right. That, that would be a huge help that we can't be dependent on, on, on a handout, so we have to figure out some way, like you guys, you guys are either trying to cut spending or you're trying to increase revenue, those are your two options. If somebody's got something else, they need to speak up. Thank you.
Yeah, Rob, thanks. And I was interested in learning more about the franchise fee, being a new council member, and I didn't mean to cause people a lot of heartburn, I just wanted to learn about it for myself. And I, you got to love Leon, he gets in front of that microphone, and you remind me of my dad. I'm like, oh, here's my dad, mine is a leather jacket, and appreciate you, Leon. My, my father would say the same thing about the river, fighting a flood for, for two years, he'd say, you can't tame Mother Nature, you can't tame it. I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
I don't have anything. I'm good.
Okay. I'd want to, I just always want to, whenever I get a chance, to say, thank you, Leon. I don't agree with everything you say, just like you don't agree with everything I say, but I appreciate your consistency, your passion, your commitment to the community. Don't ever shut up, man, keep, keep the Fonzie jacket, man, and keep letting that, keep letting that ball roll, my friend. But I, I know it, I know it, the other one's nicer than that one. But I mean that.
He's going to let you borrow it sometimes, Shane.
I'd love to. Not just to get out of control here, not just, not just you, Leon, but all the... the, all the Leon Shaheans that we have in Burlington, you know, when Eric comes down to talk about the parking, um, we gotta have that stuff, guys, we gotta have you guys coming down here and doing that, and obviously, we don't have everybody, you know, breaking down the doors to do it, so, it's always good to, uh, see Leon, it's always good to see Eric, it's always good to see, uh, Rob Kreitzer, so, um, again, we appreciate that. I just wanna say, uh, in the paper, this is a brain tumor unites family, and they're going to, uh, it's, uh, a friend of mine, Dewey Town, he, uh, he's in graduating class as I was, I'm not go, I'm not going to be able to make his benefit, 'cause I'll be out of town, but I just want to encourage everybody that can, um, he's a good man here in Burlington that needs some help, and, uh, we just, as a community, we oughta all come together, uh, when somebody has a need, and, uh, I just wanna send a message to everybody, if you can, go out and support him, and, and to, uh, to Dewey, I will, I will find you, my friend, um, I know where you're at, and I'll be dropping off a check, um, because I can't be there Friday, but I do encourage, uh, those of you who don't have anything going on, it was in the paper today, so, um, get out there and, and, and show some support, he needs some, some help with some hospital bills, he's, uh, family's going through a lot, so, again, I just, just wanna encourage people to do-
I think there's something on Facebook too, they can go on there and get a sweet donation too.
Sweet. The only other thing I've got is, uh, I'm looking for, I'm looking for a girl, uh, her name is Corina, somebody's gotta help me find this little girl, I've got, um, and I meant to bring it down tonight, but she wrote, this was like my first year as mayor, it was, it was my first year as mayor, and, uh, it was, I was just having some tough times, you know, just dealing with, uh, different things and whatnot, and I was getting kicked by a few different people, you know, that I wasn't doing it right, and this little girl, I went to Edward Stone, I went to Edward Stone, yeah, the one right down the street, and I had to speak for something, I can't remember what it was, but I had to talk for something, and, uh, afterwards, she wrote me, she, just a little piece of paper that you tear out of a little booklet, you know, and she wrote, uh, "To the mayor, from Corina," a little flower on it, and I'm gonna bring that down, and it's, this thing is all beat up and ugly, because I keep it above my sink, uh, in the kitchen, a little plastic clear, little thi, you know, I don't know how to explain it, but, bottom line is this, I've got this thing, I look at it every time I do dishes, when I get it, and I'm like, man, where's this little girl that encouraged me? I don't know who she is, I have no idea, I just know her name was Corina, and I got this thing, and it encouraged me, it did, everybody was just busting me up, and this little girl gave me that, and that was encouragement, and I gotta find this little girl, and I'm gonna give her an award and recognize her for encouraging the mayor when I really needed that encouragement. Her name's Corina, I don't know how old she is about now, but, um, somebody's gonna help me find her, so if anybody's listening, if they know who this girl is, help me get in touch with this girl so I can recognize her, that's, uh-
Be what, four years ago?
Be, yeah, be four years ago.
So she could be in college by now, right?
No, no, she was in, she was elementary school then.
Oh, I thought you said middle school.
Yeah, no, she was at, it was at a middle school, but, but she wasn't, she was like in elementary school. Mr. Rinker, counselor?
I don't have anything, other than just to tell people to try to travel safe, uh, we're going up to the legislative thing tomorrow in Des Moines, um, so we'll have a lot of great information to bring back with us there, it's supposed to freeze, so please do drive safe. And the Rotary Art Auction that I mentioned earlier is March eighth, if anybody has interest, uh, reach out to a local Rotary member for tickets.
Mr. Meg?
Um, update on the South Eighth Sewer Repair, uh, all the line has been laid and backfill has been put in, uh, the embankment has not been built up, and it'll probably be a little while until that's able to be done because of the moisture we received, but, um, everything's working there. Eric, would you throw up those pictures? I, I've heard and seen some complaints on Facebook, um, about the, when we fill potholes, we fill them with gravel, and so I have a picture of the machine that we use, it's a total patcher, and so the first picture is a picture of a pothole, if you do the next one, so what it actually, it does when we use it, is it throws down tack oil or a binding oil, and it spray, we blow out the hole, and then we spray the oil in there, and then it, then we have a, a ability to switch it from just the oil to oil and rock emulsion, if you throw it onto the next one, and so it, for lack of a better term, blows it into the hole, and then we cover it atop with rock, and so it looks as a final product as just gravel in a hole, but once it's driven over, um, sometimes when we have the ability to, we do drive over it and compact it, um, and then we end up sweeping it after time, but for a period of time, it does look like a pile of gravel on the road, um, but once the rock is cleaned up, it functions as a pretty good patch, um, and it is significantly cheaper than using cold patch, um, costs anywhere between sixty to seventy dollars a ton versus cold patch, that's about a hundred and fifty dollars a ton, so we're able to cover a lot more ground with this, it isn't as pretty as cold patch necessarily, but, um, it does last longer and it's a lot cheaper, so, just as a explanation on why you see that, and if people ask you, that's the reason why.
Last longer and cheaper, I'm all about that.
Rhonda, can you come up here for a minute before we close out? I forgot to, uh, Hal, we had a luncheon with Hal Chase, and we, there's an event coming up, can you, can you, uh, help me with that?
Yes, tomorrow, on Wednesday, um, at six-thirty at SCC, Hal Chase is gonna be speaking. Hal was a contributor, an editor of Outside In, which is a history of African-Americans in Iowa, and it came out in two thousand, and he came last Monday, I guess it was, week ago, or about a week ago, and did some research on Burlington's history, and so he's gonna be incorporating that into his presentation and having a, a discussion afterwards, so I encourage people to come to that.
So just encouraging, um, if you're, I wanna encourage, encourage, uh, city employees, um, uh, different departments, I think would be good, because they said, what caught my interest was, they said after they watched the video, that they had a lot of, engaged in a lot of conversation, I think conversation is always good, so, I would just like to encourage people, um, citizens, or, uh, uh, employees of the city of Burlington, if you don't have anything going tomorrow night, uh, it's out at SCC, um, I, what is the, do you remember the room number? It's in the small- It's by the gym, I know you have to, it's by the gym, you go, you head like you're heading to the gym, and it's, and it's by, it's round by there, I'm sure you see-
It's a ball theater right there.
Yes, it's theater right there, is that where they're going?
Yeah, the admissions offices, there's, to the right, there's a theater.
But anyways, if you don't have anything going, uh, come on out and check that out, it oughta be interesting, and, again, conversation is good. Nothing else? Okay, Peter Butler?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Somebody take us out then.
Move, move the clues, clothes?
Second. Move down second. Kathleen?
Murray?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McCambell?
Yes, please. Thank you, everybody, good night.